Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, will you please note the roll?
Commissioner Ellison is present, Commissioner Maloney is present, Commissioner Vice Chairman Barnes is present, Commissioner Steiner is present, Commissioner Clymer is present. Sorry, Chairman Bray is present. Commissioner Kish is absent. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Note that Commissioner Kish is absent, and with that, can I entertain a motion to excuse his absence this evening?
Mr. Chairman, I move to excuse Commissioner Kish for the evening.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Barnes, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to excuse Commissioner Kish from this evening's meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, motion carries. Agenda item number one. Item one is the approval of the draft minutes of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting held on December 4th, 2019. Those were online. You've had a chance to review them. I'll entertain a motion at your convenience.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the minutes.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Barnes, to approve the minutes from December 4th, 2019. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the Planning and Zoning Commission on any non-agenda items. These are non-agenda items for this evening. Any speaker cards? Perfect. Moving right along. This is disclosure of ex parte communication. This is an opportunity for commission members to disclose any ex parte communication that may have had prior to this meeting on any items scheduled to discuss on this agenda. Any disclosure from the members? Seeing none, moving right along. We will open the public hearing. Agenda item number two. Under New Businesses, this is the Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails PAD amendment, and Alex, welcome. The first presentation of 2020. Make it a good one.
Thank you, Chairman. Happy New Year, everyone.
Happy New Year.
Let me just get this. This is a lagging mouse. One second. Here we go. Sorry about that. First item I have before you tonight is the Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails PAD. This is an amendment to the existing Christopher Todd Communities at Canyon Trails PAD, which was originally approved in 2018. There was an amendment done in 2019 to revise the maximum height of, excuse me, additional build- accessory buildings. There it is, apologize. So the existing PAD area is this north portion, and I colored that in purple. The remaining portion was part of the Canyon Trails PAD and designated the property that's proposed to be included within the PAD as court home. So the Christopher Todd at Canyon Trails PAD included single-story multifamily residential on that north property. So the extension to- or the request tonight is to extend that boundary to this southern property. Additionally, the request is to rename the PAD to Hancock Communities at Canyon Trails. That is because of a change in ownership of the property, the developer. So this, moving forward, it will be Hancock Communities doing the development as opposed to the Christopher Todd Communities. And additionally, they've incorporated some design guidelines based on council discussion on the single-family, single-story multifamily rental product. So on the left is the revised development standards section. The only thing that's different is the title of Hancock from Christopher Todd Communities. And then you can see the 20-foot for residential accessory buildings was included as opposed to the 16, which I believe a different planner presented to you sometime last year. And then the design guidelines incorporates two proposed elevations. One on the north side of the page is the Santa Barbara. On the left is the one-bedroom attached product. And then on the right is the two-bedroom detached products. So, oops, I mislabeled this. This is the Tuscan elevation down here. So you'll see they're adding some diversity to their product. In addition to that, there's three color palettes per elevation to be included in both north and south communities. So the north site plan, you've seen previously. Staff has approved a site. I don't- there may be a few tweaks from the approved site plan compared to this one. This was included in the exhibit. This is the south portion which they're adding. So the main entry is once again off 173rd Avenue. And then a second entry and exit off of Lilac, which cuts across the 303. You can see some- this is the conceptual site plan, so you can see some of the open space areas included. The main clubhouse and leasing office is at the front of the site. And then there is no connections between the north and south properties. We did hold a neighborhood meeting on September 24th of 2019. There was approximately five residents in attendance. Included in your staff report was discussion on the biggest concern that was included at those meetings, which was the property wall that divided the existing homes and the proposed new rentals. The developer had did some extra research and work to determine what their path forward on that would be. They will be sharing the existing wall. The developer would come in and do an assessment of the wall as it is today, see if any repairs need to be done or any replacement. And then they would also work on matching the grades so that one side isn't looking over into a lower-grade backyard. The applicant is present tonight, so if you have additional questions on that, I'd be happy to defer those questions to him. We did give proper notice for tonight's public hearing as well as those neighborhood meetings. Having further discussion with staff internally and the applicant, we did decide recently to add an additional stipulation about the elevations. So to ensure that there is a proper mix of the elevations and color schemes throughout the community. So staff does recommend approval with an additional stipulation. What I have on the screen is a little bit different than what I'm actually going to propose. Can I read it? Or, okay. So compared to what's on the screen, the stipulation would be amended to state, "The regulatory booklet reflects two different elevations. The property shall be developed with at least two different elevations and at least three different color schemes. Adjacent units shall be of different elevations and different color schemes. Prior to issuance of a building permit for vertical construction within the property, owner-developers shall submit a plan identifying the elevation and color scheme for each unit to be constructed within the property." So essentially, we're just making sure that they are providing the diversity within the community and not grouping up similar color schemes or elevations throughout. Other than that, the engineering and zoning standards are being met per the PAD requirements. That concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for additional questions. The applicant does have a presentation available if you need, or he can use mine for reference.
Are there any questions for- thank you, Alex. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I just have one. They all- is this all rentals?
Yes.
And how many units?
On the- on the north half, I believe there's 200 and... 261 on the north side and 295 on the south side.
Any further questions for staff?
This may not be- curious. The 303, the proposed 303, and I know it's been put off, but where is that running? Because that's Cotton Lane where this is. Where is that going to pick up?
The freeway actually ends almost halfway down.
It ends there, but where is it going to pick up to go to the SR, whatever they're calling it, to go over to the 202?
I think it- oh, across to the 202?
Yeah, State Route 30.
That's down further south along the Old 85. Is where that will head towards- back towards the east. But you bring up a good point in between the staff and the applicant. As far as noise is concerned along that project, is there enough of a barrier for the future? Because I know right now it may be minimal because it's not necessarily a highway. But in the future, you know, it's obviously clearly going to be a highway, and they're very close to- very close to it, so...
Thank you, Chairman.
Is there something we're looking at there, or a study been done?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. There are two stipulations included in the ordinance that talk about noise requirements, meeting city standards. The sound attenuation was our- I think it was already started working on or completed by the applicant in partnership with ADOT. One thing to know on the stipulations, the city is working on updating our noise standards to match ADOT standards' noise quality. So that differs a little bit from today's existing zoning ordinance. So you'll see the stipulations six and seven are enhanced a little bit to change looking forward to our amendment, which matches ADOT's noise requirements.
Perfect. Thank you. Any further questions for the staff?
One other further question on that same note. So then, construction of the freeway when it begins at that section to go south to go meet up with the SR 30?
Yes.
Okay. Is that going to impact any of the land in that area? Or is that- is there enough setback that that's not going to be an issue?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Andy, but I believe ADOT currently owns all of the right-of-way needed for the SR, I mean, the 303.
Thank you.
The applicant is here.
This far. For the record, Andy Jokums, planner with Buus Gilbert McGruder on behalf of the applicant. Alex did a pretty good presentation, so I'm not going to regale you with any duplicative information. But I did want to, while we're just talking about the 303, since the slide is up here, you can kind of see on the right-hand side of that aerial photo, it shows Cotton Lane. That's the ADOT right-of-way, and there's a flood control channel that would separate the future freeway from the property. We did do the sound study already, and that sound study was using the assume- the assumption that the freeway was there. It was not based on that being a Cotton Lane RTR roadway. It was based on that being a multilane freeway. Just briefly, ultimately, we did get- come with this project previously. We've seen a lot of interest in high-quality rental in Goodyear because of the employment uses that are coming to your city. So even though the project that we call the North Parcel is currently only grading, they've just started putting grading and putting the retention in the ground, we have already locked- looked at this property to expand a second phase of the project. It was zoned court homes under the Canyon Trails PAD. Court homes allows, you know, five to eight units to the acre, so this is a bit increase of an acre. But when we did meet with the neighbors, they were very supportive of this type of project and the one-story height limit that would be here versus a cluster of court homes. Just briefly, before I open any questions, and Alex did mention it, we're using the exact same development standards that we did for the North Parcel. However, we kind of listened to the work sessions you were having with the city council related to this type of single-story rental product. We were already going down that vein, but we kind of heard it, and we said, you know what, they're right. Let's get more diversity out there. So that's when we added that second architectural theme in there that she mentioned, the Santa Barbara and the Tuscan. And we ensured that we were using, I think it's other projects not in Goodyear, we were using two color schemes. We've hit it with three for each. The one thing we've done as a little kind of carrot for the city is that North Parcel was already approved. It's under construction. We could have moved forward with the one elevation theme we had out there, and I think we are still at three color schemes. We decided to impose that on ourselves up there, too. So moving forward, those design themes would apply to the entire project, not just the expansion that we are really proposing today. Neighborhood meeting was earlier. There's a couple folks here. We kind of wanted to talk about that briefly. The only real concern was that wall. I think over time, as the cotton fields were developed, some additional landfill or fill got pushed to that south half. So if you're walking on our side of the wall, it's only about four feet tall. If you're on the neighbor's side of the wall, they've got six-foot-tall backyard. So they were concerned over what really would be the height of those walls. We have not done final engineering, but we're telling the city, we're telling the neighbors that our goal is to make sure the finished pads of our buildings are the same as the finished pads of their buildings. That will be probably pulling a lot of that dirt away. We may find that that wall is pretty decrepit and will have to rebuild it, but that's what we agreed to do. What we can't do is put more courses of block on top of that six-foot-tall wall. It wasn't designed for it. We're certainly not going to do that. That's it between Alex and my presentation. I think you kind of got everything. I'm okay with the new stipulation as presented by staff. I just wanted some clarification that it's, when we talk about elevation, one elevation and color scheme, that it's both. Since I have so many units and I only have two elevation styles, there's bound to be one Tuscan next to another Tuscan. But as long as the color scheme is different per the stipulation, we're okay. I'm okay with it. Any questions?
Any questions for the applicant? Yes.
Okay, so if you come into this development, you come down the 303 and you take a left on Lilac, where is the- for the other part, the northern part, when- how do they get in? You have to- how do you get to the other side?
So current conditions today with the 303 generally ending where it does and dropping into Cotton Lane, that's absolutely correct, is the- if you're coming south on the 303, you've got to get off on Lilac, and the south parcel, you can enter from that subdivision. The north parcel, you do have to go over to 173rd and back up towards Van Buren to come in. In the ultimate conditions, if you're coming south on the 303, it flies right over Lilac and it doesn't exist. You're actually going all the way down to Yuma. So either you've got to get off the freeway early and take the frontage roads to get on Van Buren and come over, or you've got to come back up from Yuma.
Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant? This may not apply directly here, but my question that I have in, maybe just to head off problems, and I didn't see the stipulation, but maybe there's something there. But when this project does get underway, I think it's going to be a little bit unique because you're basically going to be working right in the backyards of a lot of people. Is there something that the city has talked about, maybe timeframes of which they may be moving those from normal timeframes so that, you know, heavy equipment, especially in the beginning when they're building pads, kind of head off a, you know, a slew of telephone calls to the city?
I'm going to turn that way the same way you were turning.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the question. You're referring to construction hours of operation. Is that correct?
Pretty much, because, I mean, if I lived in one of those houses and a scraper started running at 6 o'clock and I would probably be a little upset.
So the city has established construction hours that shift throughout the year.
Right.
In the spring, I think it's March or April, April, they shift earlier. And then during nice weather like now, it's later, obviously. And so we would seek to apply that same standard to this project as we do everywhere else. There's an existing Christopher Todd/Hancock community that's under construction behind the Walgreens area at Australia and Van Buren that backs up to some existing homes in the existing subdivision of Rancho Mirage. We have had a couple of construction complaints about that, and we have reached out to Rose Law Group, who represented Christopher Todd in that particular project on several occasions in order to get the contractor under control, if you will. And so I think that's been solved on that case, and we would expect them to be good behavior, good neighbors in this same manner. So if there are any issues, they should call us and let us know because we want to be on top of it. I would say that we should just hold this community to the same standard as the other communities in the city because we already have that covered.
Okay.
If that answers your question.
It does. And there may be consideration, whether it's the city or the builder, it may be nice to notify those residents specifically that, you know, it's going to occur, you know, give them a timeframe and let them know what hours of operation that may occur.
We can provide that information. Be happy to work with Andy so he can get the word out. Would be happy to do it.
I think maybe just hopefully thought processes to curb some of this-
Yep, no, agreed.
So people know.
Sure.
I mean, I live on the other side, and like I said, I think I'd be upset if one day I woke up and I saw a scraper going across my backyard. So, anyway.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
I had read before, and I just found it again, about the wall going from 13 to eight feet. Along- is that along the 303? And I was just wondering if it had been a city requirement to be 13 feet for some time, and then now they're going to change it to match state requirements. Did the state change, or is it? How did that come about?
Through the chair, Commissioner. I'll be candid with you. This is sound engineering, and I'm a planner. The reality of it was is there's multiple calculations you can use when creating the necessary height for a sound wall and how much sound it attenuates to- drops the sound to a usable level. My layperson understanding of it is the city's standard, and Alex and maybe Katie or Christopher, correct me if I'm wrong, is a little outdated. So if you- whatever, depending on what formula you use, the city's formula produced a requirement for a sound wall that was 13 feet tall. Using ADOT's formulas that the city is looking to adopt anyway, produces a much shorter wall with a similar level of attenuation.
Similar, but maybe not the same. I just wondered-
That'd be my layperson understanding, is that it just depends on what level you- level of attenuation you use and what formula you use.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just help.
Yes, sir.
Go, Christopher, please.
Thank you for that. So the city's current standard is 64 decibels. The new FHWA and ADOT standard, so it's pegged to- the state pegs it to the feds, federal government, is, I believe, 67. So there's a three-decibel difference. And that makes it- that, because you can have 67 decibels instead of 64, that then shrinks the wall by the whatever footage it is.
But the city could be more restrictive, couldn't they, or not?
We could be, however. It's best practice in these situations to peg ourselves and our standards to what ADOT requires, which is also what the federal government requires. In this particular example, these are also rental community- rental homes or dwelling units, rather. And so if somebody is- has a problem with the noise, they do have an opportunity of moving to another unit in the facility or moving out of the facility as well, so the community, rather. So there is- and from the city perspective, we are concerned about having canyons along our freeways. So we obviously are sensitive to the residents and the future homeowners and future residents of communities and not having a whole lot of noise, you know, transmission to their homes and their dwelling units. Totally get that, and we respect that, and want to make sure that happens. At the same time, we don't want to have a whole bunch of 20 and 30, 15-foot walls lining all of our freeways so that visibility into the community or even visibility site distances into our commercial centers are impeded, if that makes sense. So there's a trade-off there.
And obviously, five feet less of wall is a lot less expensive for the developer.
And it's a whole lot of imposing in those backyards, too. That was really our concern, is you're- even it's a renter, you know, you're renting a unit with their backyard, is looking at a 15-foot-tall wall. And that's just- that's hard, and even if we've extended the backyards about 25 feet, but that's still an imposing figure.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Appreciate you coming out. Public hearing. So is there any speaker's cards? Anyone from the public wish to address the commission on this issue? You would? Go ahead and come forward. State your name. For the record, you have three minutes. Are we doing three minutes? Three minutes is the timer. And then when you're done, if you would, just fill out a slip with Alyssa, our secretary, so that it's on record, please.
Okay. Phil Roy. I live on 172nd Drive, which backs up to the proposed community. And I was at the preliminary meeting, one of the five that was listed. And of course, the main concern is the adjoining wall that we were supposedly going to share. You don't need an engineer to come out and look at the integrity of the wall to tell that it's not a good adjoining wall. When that wall was built, it was basically a barrier between that and the farm field. So it's not your standard outward-facing wall that would be like what you'd see pretty much anywhere else in the Goodyear communities. So it boggles my mind to think that they're going to try and use that wall based upon the integrity of the wall. It is probably the cheapest form of cinder block that you could find. So when Centex built the community back in 2005, 2006, obviously during the housing boom, they did a lot of things that were compromising and kind of shoddy work, which included that wall. It has not necessarily been a problem considering that's just been a farm field with just tractors and basically dust coming on the- them turning the field every six months or so. But now that you have a community of over 600 units with the turnover of rentals and people in the back, that's a concern. Not only my concern, but pretty much everybody that lives on that street. And I'm six foot two. If I stand on my side of the wall, it would cover me. And yes, maybe over time, the farm field has pushed dirt up to the wall. But even still, if you're going to consider building a pad for these houses and be able to drain the water and have the correct drainage, those houses are going to set up a lot higher than that wall, and I can guarantee it. So that's a concern. If you look at some of the other communities that were mentioned, Walgreens over here on Australia Parkway, they built an additional wall that towers over the other wall. And there's a slight separation in between the two walls. I don't know exactly what needs to be done, but I do know that that is a major concern. And with the additional units here, and I've lived in the community for over 10 years now, I think traffic study needs to be performed with all these additional units because nobody knows exactly where the 303 is coming through. And even tonight is evident that you don't know the flow of traffic. And so with where this community is placed and where the freeway entrance would be, the majority of people are going to be going down to Yuma-
You have 20 seconds.
-to catch the freeway. And so if you look at 173rd Avenue that goes through the entire community in order to get to freeway access, which will eventually be on Yuma because you're not going to be able to access the freeway from Lilac, you're going to have to go down to Yuma. And so the majority of traffic, including from our neighborhood and all these 500 and something units, are going to not take Van Buren to the frontage road. They're going to take 173rd, which passes several stop signs. There's a school in there. There's several parks. And I don't think that that has really been considered as far as the amount of traffic.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments, and I'm sure the staff will take that under consideration. Any other comments from the public at this time? If you'll just fill out a card with her so that it's on the record, I'd appreciate it. Anyone else? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Any discussion- A discussion on this particular project. Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I so move that we approve 19-210-00006.
Second. It has been moved by Commissioner Clymer, seconded by Commissioner Steiner to approve agenda 19-210-00006. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Did you note that in the record? Thank you. Just for your information, sir, and Chris, if you'll tell him, the final decision will be made with the city council. So if you have, you want to express your concerns, there were purely advisory, so that, that'll be, you'll get a second chance there. And thank you for coming out. We appreciate it. Agenda item number three is the preliminary plat for Australia Parcel 12.21. And I'll turn it back over to Alex.
Thank you, Chairman. This is a preliminary plat for 12.24. Hopefully, I had that noted correctly in the action item. The property is currently zoned within the Australia Phase 1 PAD. So it's outlined in red here. Most recently, you've seen the 12.23 preliminary plat come before you. So this is just north of that. North of 12.24 is a junior high school site, which the applicant has indicated that they will be proceeding soon with a rezone. So you may be seeing that in the upcoming agendas. On the right, you can see the existing conditions today. So the Gulf Village Community sits just west of Australia Parkway. The community includes 80 lots with lot sizes of 47 by 115 feet. That meets the zoning requirements of the Australia PAD. The main entry is off of Wind Drift, which you can see off of Australia, if I can use the pointer. It's not working again. But where that Sheet 4 and Sheet 3 meet, there's an additional access point which goes north that would connect to the future junior high school site and if approved for rezoning, a future residential development, whatever it may be. And then there's two points that connected Australia to 12.24, which, like I said, you approved the preliminary plat a few months ago, and those are on the, the south side. Other than that, the preliminary plat meets the city's requirements, and staff recommends approval subject to the stipulations included in the staff report. The applicant is available for questions, and I can answer any as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any questions for Alex? All right. Pete, would you want to address the commission? Perfect. Any questions for the applicant? Perfect. With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve 19-500-00014.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Maloney to approve the preliminary plat for Australia Parcels, item number 19-500-00014. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Staff communication.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hope you all had a great new year. Going to be an exciting 2020. It's hard to believe that. Just to give you a brief recap, if you remember, we met in regular session on December 4th, and you all considered the preliminary plat for Civic Square Parcel B, which is north of Monte Vista, south of Encanto, to the west side of 150th and to the east of the Bullard Wash, if you remember that project. So that was forwarded to the city council at their meeting at the end of December and was approved. So that is, we're actually visiting next week to talk about the homes and the, and the design, and doing the residential design review for the structures that are to be built there. So we're excited that's moving forward. Only other bit of information I have for you is a little bit forward-looking. The APA, Arizona Chapter of the American Planning Association, puts a conference on, is it every year or every two years? Every year. This coming up year in the fall, I believe it's in the fall, Katie's going to give us some more information in just a second, is at the Wigwam. So there's a great learning opportunity for you all. There's some, some great sessions. It's probably two or, two days or so. And I'm going to let Katie elaborate on to it. Just to get you thinking about this training opportunity, the city would be obviously willing to sponsor your registration and so forth as a planning commissioner member to get to training about what's going on around the state and even the nationwide perspective. So I'll turn it over to Katie.
Thank you. So the exact dates are Wednesday, September 9th through Friday, September 11th. And it is a conference that has tracks on various topics, so there's, you know, usually multiple sessions during each time period. So we'll, we'll get you more information as we get closer. You know, the full program hasn't been set out yet, but we wanted to give you a heads-up about it. So if you wanted to block those dates on your calendar so you can plan on attending, you could do so now. So again, it's Wednesday, September 9th through Friday, September 11th. And that's really about it. I mean, it's just, it's planning professionals, architects, landscape architects, the university community, all making presentations on various topics related to planning.
I was going to ask, how many seminars are you teaching?
We, we probably put in one or two, but we'll, we'll see.
I mean, we're pretty cutting-edge, I would say.
Yeah.
Did someone tell the American Planning Association it's still pretty hot in September?
It's the Arizona chapter, so they're, they're aware of that.
Yeah. Yeah, so it's, it's small. It's just for the state.
Right.
I mean, anyone is welcome to attend, but it, it's targeted to those living in the state of Arizona to attend. And they do really encourage planning commissioners to attend, and they love it when they can get planning commissioners out to these conferences.
Any other staff communication?
No, sir. Thank you.
Well, with that, the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting will be held on February 12, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. at the Goodyear Municipal Court and Council Chambers. With that, this meeting's adjourned.